I'd like to call it a order, this meeting of the Board of Education on July 7th. Mr. Drur, roll call please.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Menke. Ms. Laramo.
Here.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Here. And I'll point out Ms. Menke is driving from the south and hopefully will roll in very soon, within the next five minutes was her ETA. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome everyone to the Commodore Building. We thank you for attending the Board of Education meeting this evening. We care about the safety of our students, staff, families, and guests. Please note that there are exits on both of the east and west side of the cafeteria. In case of an emergency, there is an AED located right outside the cafeteria doors. You are located, if you need to call, emergency personnel at 140 East Indiana Avenue. Thank you for joining us and supporting Perrysburg Schools. Before us is our agenda. There's a consent agenda. There's going to be financial discussions, and we do have an executive session scheduled. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bennington, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Drur, roll call.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Laramo.
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Item number four, personnel. We have a consent agenda, January, or July. As we shift between contract years, we have several resignations and lots of contracts. Are there any other comments or highlights we want to make from that, Mr. Hostler?
Sure. So this is a very exciting evening for us, and we have with us Jennifer Thompson, who is being recommended for the principal's position at Toth Elementary School. So she is here with her family, and as you know, the filling the, you know, filling the position was very important to us. And, you know, Toth is just a great and certainly a building that people are very connected to. And for many years, as you know, here in Perrysburg, it's our oldest elementary school. But we understand that, you know, as we began to seek, you know, the next leader of that building, there were all different kinds of suggestions as to who that might be, and the qualities that they wanted in that person. And we began to look through those, and the number of applicants right now, as you know, for administrators and teachers and other education folks, isn't what it used to be. And so we extended the deadline, and fortunately, in that extension, we did get an applicant who we were very excited to see for us. As we got into the interview process, you know, she immediately, you know, the feedback immediately put her on the top of the list as a viable candidate. When we got to the building level interviews, the staff and administrative group, the principals and the teachers that were part of the committee at the building level indicated that she had many of those qualities that they were looking for, that we heard about from the staff and the community at Toth. And it's remarkable, her background and the things that really caught people's attention was her, just the excitement and enthusiasm that she brings to everything that she does. You know, the position is demanding in terms of all the different kinds of qualities that you want from a person, and throughout her career, she's been able to demonstrate all those kinds of things. And the use of data and understanding how data can be used to help guide instruction was something that she was very adept and very skilled at. But really impressed, what impressed the group was the data, and when she talked about the data, it wasn't just a spreadsheet and numbers, but it was about relating that to the students and the difference that that makes for students and teachers and supporting teachers. In her role currently, she's someone who works with teachers, works alongside of them, in helping them find ways to improve what they're doing in reading, to make sure that they can reach all students. So when we talk about ensuring all students achieve their greatest potential, it is something that she is doing and has done on a daily basis. And speaking with the superintendent of the district, you know, they weren't happy that we were taking her. So that's always a good sign when, you know, you get someone on the end of the phone that says, "Really? You're going to do that to us?" And that's always a great sign. So not for that district, but for us. We even had the ability to check people that weren't on her reference list, and the feedback was consistently very positive. And she's also a teacher of teachers, which is sometimes the most difficult group to teach, and she's done that at Lord's University. So we're very excited for her to join the Toth team and be part of the Perrysburg School. So with that, we're very grateful for you to be here, and we're excited that hopefully here in a few minutes with the board's approval, we'll have you onboard, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hostler. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? All right, then look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bennington, Ms. Laramo. Mr. Drur, roll call please.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Ms. Laramo.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Yes.
All right. Well, if we could just take a pause. If you'd like to come up and board.
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You're going to my favorite building. Congratulations.
Thank you. I've heard wonderful things.
Great culture. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So do we want to get a couple of pictures? I don't know if all or some, or.
Susan, for sure, and all of us?
I think you guys should go.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I didn't wear my favorite.
I guess we're going.
Can't be the only one.
I think, yeah. That would look weird.
I bet you didn't change your makeup for that.
I didn't have quite the pressure.
Can do that. and all the other wonderful teachers who are joining the district. So lots of great, lots of great news from the personnel side, and we thank Mr. Christie and for the team for continuing to fill the roles. So we move into Agenda Number Five. We turn it over to Mr. Hostler and Mr. Drur for an update to try to understand what's happening at the state level. Purposely said that way.
That is a tall order.
Mm-hmm.
We understand what's going on at the state level. We just can't say it out loud.
I'll go for it.
All right, so let me just, I only have seven slides here, so this is not too elaborate, but just remind you the process. Back in late winter there, the governor put his proposal out. In this cycle, it starts in one side or the other, and this cycle's in the House. House took the governor's proposal, did their thing to it, massaged it, and came out with House Bill 96. From there, it went to the Senate. The Senate took it, massaged it some, changed some things, and came out with their omnibus amendment to House Bill 96. At this point then, it went back to the House for a vote, and the House voted non-concur. So it goes to conference committee, and this is where it gets murky, as we know. It's, you know, there's three members from the House, three members from the Senate, go behind closed doors and hash this out and come up and bring it out for a vote. There's no, there's no public input at this point. It is just whatever happens behind closed doors. So the conference committee came out with their proposal, sent it to the governor. The governor then, last Monday, went through the budget and issued 67 line item vetoes. So that's kind of where we are today. We have the conference committee budget, essentially the biennial budget, with the governor's line item vetoes. The next step is the General Assembly can undertake veto overrides if they'd like. They have not, they have a year and a half, they can override any of the governor's vetoes.
A year and a half?
A year and a half. Now typically, what, you know, it's going to happen, if they override a veto in the next 90 days, I'll show why it's important, 90 days is important, those overrides go into effect when they're on their stated time. If it's outside the 90 days, they go into effect immediately. So, and then, so right now, that's where it sits. The General Assembly is not in session. Everyone is home enjoying, enjoying the sun, but we can tell you that the Republican Caucus is in whip mode to get, to get support for what they feel are the most important aspects of this, and intelligence tells us it's probably on the property tax side. Regardless of what happens with the veto overrides, we still have other property tax reform bills that will come up here in the fall. So what does this mean? So the governor signed the bill with the line item veto, so those appropriations became effective July 1st. So we're funded based on what was in the budget. So we're here in, next Friday, we'll get our first, you know, payment of the year. Any other policy provisions are 90 days after signage, so that means they would go into effect typically in October. So things, they don't happen right away unless they're otherwise specified. So many of the things on the property tax issues don't go into effect right away, and the levy stuff, for example. So we talk about the levy, our levy is not impacted by this because it's happening before the 90 days. So a couple of notes, and this is where it's trying to clear away some of the confusion. So the May forecast, if you recall, I used the Senate's financial components. The key ones being continual phasing of fair school funding plan, no increase in base costs, and then they added some funding for growing districts, which includes us, and for high-performing districts, which is us. So in the Senate's financial components, we actually see increase in funding over the House bill. So that's good. I also incorporated, I assume that there's some provisions of Senate Bill 66 would be included, which is a cap on revenue growth due to valuation increases, and include fixed sum and income tax levies in the floor calculations. Those were included. The governor has vetoed those line items, but again, I think those are going to be high priorities to be overridden. So, but the bottom line is, our forecast is, if the governor's vetoes are overridden, we're right where we expected to be, okay? If the governor's veto is not overridden, then we're going to be a little bit better, not in the next two years, but in the following two years because of that valuation provision. So the conference committee changes. So this is going back to, and it really does not significantly impact this, but I just want to point out a couple of things. Performance-based funding was moved outside the formula, which means our five-star rating is getting us more money, it's moved outside the formula, which means a couple of extra dollars. Not, not really significant. Emergency and substitute levies include the 20 mil floor calculation. This was vetoed, but this, our current fixed sum levy now would add into our 20 mil floor calculation. So we're no longer at the floor. Where's the 20 mil floor? Well, now you've got to add, you know, seven mils, eight mils back in, so we're at 28 mils. So you'll see that millage, we have to drop a long way before we hit the floor again. And prohibits emergency levies and substitute levies after January 1. Again, that was in there. That has been vetoed by the governor also. This doesn't impact us today, but it certainly could impact us in the next levy cycle. And added principles to the language that prohibits retirement pickup. And we talked about this a little bit, the slap on superintendents and treasurers, trying to, you know, limit the boards, what they do for us in our contracts. They added principles to that one. This one's legally iffy, but that's beside the point. The governor has vetoed that also.
I was going to say, I thought he vetoed that one.
And then the 40 percent carryover balance with exceptions, the governor's vetoed this also, but this is one of those also we expect, it's a high priority for the legislature to do something with it. So here are some of the line item veto numbers. I'm not going to go through the main ones. Item 51, we just talked about, that's the pickup on retirement. The number 63 is the cash balance carryover. 65 is the 20 mil floor calculation, and 66, the property tax restrictions. So those are all, you know, potential priorities. The county budget commission authority, this is when we haven't talked about that, but essentially gives the county budget commission authority, say, "Hey, school district, you've got plenty of money. We're going to roll back your, your taxes, or roll back your levies," and have the authority to do that. "Oh, you've got plenty of money this year. We're going to roll it back." And then, and the governor's reduced some of that authority from the budget, from the budget, county budget commission, but it still sits there. Don't know where that one's going to sit. We think we may have some opportunity in that one to influence. So right now, the governor's vetoes are in place. You know, the legislatures, the caucuses are trying to whip up their support, and so bottom line is, it's our time to make sure that our representatives know, you know, how it impacts us and how, you know, and try, hopefully, we can get a couple of these wins in support of public education. The last thing I want to comment on, and Governor Dewine, we greatly appreciate his thoughtfulness on these. He's not, he's not saying that property tax reform is not important. I think he's, I'm going to paraphrase, is that it's important, but it needs to be well thought out, thought through, and not just knee-jerked like these bills were. So he has proposed putting together working groups to work on how to fix the system, not just rip things out and see what happens. So that's a little bit paraphrasing, editorializing, but, so the bottom line for us, and I think it's important, our assumptions back in May still hold. I mean, there's not really any major tweaks financially. So we talk about the levy, right now, this budget bill, we were in exactly the place we're going to be. The only side really is up if some of the governor's vetoes hold, and it'd be, it'd be up in the last two years of the forecast. So again, we're in good shape in that regard. So just, but on the other hand, there's going to be some more property tax legislation out there. We're just going to have to stay on top of it and continue to inform the public and our representatives. You know, again, I think, I think we want to be in the place of helping support and guide thoughtful legislation than rather than, you know, just seem like we're fighting for every dollar. So, any questions? That's kind of where we are. So we're waiting to see. Oh, I should mention, the talk in Columbus is to try to get the General Assembly back on July 29th and 30th, so a couple of weeks. And I suspect, and Tom, you may want to weigh in on this, I suspect the plan would be, if the majority party can get their votes whipped up, they're going to get them in and vote without a whole lot of discussion and move on.
Yeah, I think that the idea is it has to pass both chambers by a certain number of votes, and I know they're, they're, they're pretty close. There was, there are some folks that have been, you know, from the Republican Caucus who've said, you know, "I'm going to support the vetoes." So they're counting those votes, and there are some that are undecided, or people that would be supportive of schools that really haven't come out and said anything yet. So if it fails in one of the chambers, then it's done. So there'll be, if they do call, call folks back, there'll be a big rush to contact those legislators, especially those that are identified as being kind of on the, on the bubble, who are supportive of schools and might be sympathetic to some of these issues, so.
We need to swing, correct me wrong, four votes in the Senate or six votes in the House.
Yeah.
And, and there have been some senators who really understand school funding and understand the damage this stuff will do, but whether or not there's enough there, we don't know.
So as it stands today, and I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, as you said, Mr. Drur, appreciative of the governor's line item vetoes of some of these, you know, a lot, some of these measures, all of these measures. But a few months ago, we were talking about, you know, the not updating the cost inputs into the fair school funding formula, and how you're looking at wealthy districts, and that was, I don't know if I want to use the word disappointing or incredibly upsetting. And then came along, so that's still in place.
Right.
Then came along all of these various initiatives and bills that left me mortified. They're now out, for now. So have I gone from mortified just to, what did I say, extremely upset? Because we still haven't, again, not looking a gift horse in the mouth, but there's still challenges to school funding in the state of Ohio, thanks to the fair school funding formula.
Yeah, you'd have to go back to 2010 before, I think, in terms of a budget that's been as challenging as this budget will be for us. I think you'd have to go back to the recession, because I think this is, you know, certainly a challenging budget for us moving forward, for those reasons that you discussed. So the shift from Columbus, supporting schools like Perrysburg, to relying more and more on local taxpayers because they're not adjusting the inputs in the formula, that's exactly what this does, which makes it very difficult for us, you know, now and in the future, so.
And across the state, that means a drop from 35 percent state support to 32 percent. So that balance across the state's shifting more and more to the local, and of course, disproportionately to the, to the wealthier districts.
And so what he means by that is for every dollar of revenue that a school district receives on average in the state, right now, 35 cents comes from the state, and that will drop to.
Thirty-two.
Thirty.
Thirty-two cents.
Thirty-two cents. For us, 20 cents, so we're well below the state average, and depending on how far this goes, it could be as low as 11 cents, reducing it that far. So in 2014, we were 27 cents. So that slide is impactful to the district, but also, when people talk about property tax relief, that slide is also critical in keeping that pressure off local taxpayers, too.
I think that's an important reminder that we kind of look at the five-year forecast as the norm, except that really wasn't the norm. It was the norm with some really bad-case scenarios that have actually come to happen. So I think that's a great reminder that we still have more limited funding than we, you know, a couple of years ago would have projected through the fair school funding formula. Other questions or discussions about this before we move into the levy discussion? Okay. Then I'd like to move us into Number Six, Board Discussion on the Operating Levy. What is provided there in the PDF that's attached to this Agenda item is, I think, pretty much the presentation from previous, maybe even June. So rather than have us go through the same presentation again, I'd like to instead kind of shift to discussion. If people want us to reference certain slides, we certainly can go back to things, but I want to pick up our discussion of maybe where we left off in early June, end of May, where we were discussing the different level of amounts. We had kind of started to focus in on the 11 million. We had focused on the fact that that was, you know, kind of the dollar figure that would be the least amount that we would have to collect to get through the five-year forecast and still have cash reserve close to the minimum that our policy requires, even though it's under. And I think we were still discussing the length, but obviously, there's a lot that's happened in all of our minds possibly in the last six weeks, so I want to just kind of take a step back, check in with everybody about where we are and what questions or things we'd still like to discuss. So I'm going to look at the finance folks from our finance committee, since they dug into this a little bit more, and so I'll turn to Mr. Bennington first and then Ms. Menke.
Yeah, sure. See, I think in the June meeting, Finance Committee, in the June Finance Committee meeting, we were, we were ready to come in and propose the $11 million, 7.84 mils, I believe, levy, is that being the one that provided an adequate amount or a, you know, an acceptable level of days' cash outstanding? Recognizing that no programs, no positions that were previously cut, riffed, would be coming back, and also recognizing that that would still be the amount that is going to instill, not that, I say this, recognizing that this district has a lot of financial discipline, but would continue that need for financial discipline. It wouldn't make the finances easy per se. It is, it was less than the, again, $14 million kind of levy that was, was the starting point a year earlier. It was about the amount that we had lost, but with the savings that had occurred through the various riffs, including in the program cuts and the redistricting, $11 million, 7.84 mils was going to be the recommendation of the Finance Committee, until we went from being very disappointed in the budget to potentially mortified. Now that I'm back to just being disappointed, I'm still in a position where, where that's what makes the most sense to me. I know I wasn't at the, the work session in June, but I did watch it and thought there was a very good discussion in there about, you know, the considerations about an income tax levy and why an income tax levy isn't the best option for this district today. So based off of all of this, the work, the discussions we've had for several months now, I'm still at the, I'm still at the $11 million, 7.84 property tax levy.
Ms. Menke.
Continuing on Eric's comments on the financial discipline, yes, I am there with him in terms of the 11 million. I do still have concerns with whether we do four years or five years, because we have two other biennial budgets that we'll go through, and as always, we never know what the state's going to throw at us or take away from us. I'm, I'm having history with finances in school. I'm a little bit uncomfortable on that last year because I just feel like it's a slippery slope for us, and it would mean that there's a good chance that we'll have to be very financially disciplined and maybe take some other things away that we provide our students right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anderson, you're making eye contact with me, so I'll go with you first.
I'll take it, so I'll, I'll continue along. I think the, you know, as we've gone through it, since, you know, so I joined at the beginning of the process here in April and went from, wow, this is really challenging, to, oh my God, this is almost an impossible math equation, to now we've come back to really challenging, right? If I think about it, we're, we're not going to be returning any of the cuts that were made, right? But if we want to continue the four, five-star rating that we have, we've got to continue to invest in the students, and the $11 million number is the number that gets us there. It's not easy. Technically, it doesn't get us to the 60-day true cash in the last year that we want. It means we're going to have to be very disciplined in how we manage things, but it keeps us where we're at. And I, I agree with you, Ms. Menke. I think the, what's going to happen in those out years is, is a big question mark, especially with some of the property tax reform and the other things that are floating around. the considerations about an income tax levy and why an income tax levy isn't the best option for this district today. So based off of all of this, the work, the discussions we've had for several months now, I'm still at the, I'm still at the $11 million, 7.84 property tax levy.
Ms. Menke?
Continuing on Eric's comments on the financial discipline. Yes, I am there with him in terms of the 11 million. I do still have concerns with whether we do four years or five years because we have two other biennial budgets that we'll go through. And as always, we never know what the state's going to throw at us or take away from us. I'm, I'm having history with finances in school. I'm a little bit uncomfortable on that last year because I just feel like it's a slippery slope for us. And it would mean that there's a good chance that we'll have to be very financially disciplined and maybe take some other things away that we provide our students right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anderson, you're making eye contact with me, so I'll go with you first.
I'll take it, so I'll, I'll continue along. I think the, you know, as we've gone through it, it's interesting, you know, so I joined at the beginning of the process here in, in April and went from, wow, this is really challenging to, oh my God, this is almost an impossible math equation, to now we've come back to really challenging, right? If I think about it, we're, we're not going to be returning any of the cuts that were made, right? But if we want to continue the four, five-star rating that we have, we've got to continue to invest in the students. And the, the $11 million number is the number that gets us there. It's not easy. Technically, it doesn't get us to the 60-day true cash in the last year that we want. It means we're going to have to be very disciplined in how we manage things. But it keeps us where we're at. And I, I agree with you, Ms. Menke. I think the, what's going to happen in those out years is, is a big question mark, especially with some of the property tax reform and the other things that are floating around. But I think we've got, we've got to go with the best decision we've got on, on the table today. And I think the 11 million for five years is there. We just have to be, it's possible we're going to have to come back somewhere in that five-year period, depending on what the state does. And that's just something we'll have to deal with when and if it happens.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Laramore?
Well, honestly, I think, Ms. Menke, Mr. Anderson gave logical reasons to make it a five-year levy. We don't know in two biennium budgets what they're going to do to us next. It's so ridiculously impossible to run a district without some sort of financial foundation. And there is some kind of weird going on down there that I would rather not have that reflect on us. So I would rather see some stability, which is what we have proposed before. So that kind of leads into my other perplexion is that I personally feel that the three attempts that we have made to pass an operational levy have been incredibly logical. They've been based on what we've heard. They've been based on what we've been told to do. Yet they have been hammered twice. Third time, not as badly, sorry, it's an adverb, not as badly. But nonetheless, it seems like, Eric, your words keep, keep ringing in my ear. The best levy is the one that passes. And we've tried logic. We've tried reasonable. We've tried following what we've been hearing from the community three times. So do we still do what they've asked us to do in the past? Do we still do the logical thing? Or do we do something a little bit more illogical, but maybe something that would pass? And that's why I'm kind of leaning more towards the 8 million, 5.75 mils. The reason being that there is kind of an option in there. It lasts until 2028 and gives the new board a chance to, and that would be another new board beyond the one coming up, a chance to review and see what they're doing, to make reductions and cuts, which we still keep hearing people are saying that we need to do. Where, I'm not exactly sure. I can feel Mr. Christie's eyes glaring at me right now. If you, if you, if I'm understanding this correctly, Randy, if we went with something like the 5.75, that means we would definitely be back on the ballot for something else by those three years. Or we have to do cuts and reductions in order to make that last. What I don't understand on that option there is how long is that? It says three years or further reductions. Is it only for three years?
You can't get past three years on 8 million without reductions.
Oh, that's what you're saying.
You can make it 8 million, you can make it 10 years. It doesn't matter. You're not going to, you're not going to get past three years without further cuts with 8, 8 million. So if you pass, in my mind, if you pass, if you want to do a levy of 8 million, you might as well say, Randy and Tom, what's our reduction plan? Right now.
That last column, yes, if no new funds are available. We're, we're going to have to make cuts with the 8.5.
I understand, I understand. But that's what I'm hearing, is that we haven't cut enough. And so if, if it was, because on the two up above, we've got it down as the length of the levy, five-year levy expires, five-year levy expires. On that one, we don't have a time period for it. So is it a four or five, or we can? I mean, obviously, it's a moot point. You don't have enough to get through five. Does that mean if, if we don't have enough money to get through?
Correct.
A four or five years?
Yes.
We can't optimize it?
We run out of money at three years with this levy. And then we had a list of the reductions that we would have to make to, to get through that, to get through that period.
Okay, all right.
And I could bring up that.
That list was actually even not as much as we would probably need to cut based on the millage.
Yeah, because I think for the, for the 9.9 option, it was 6.71 million in cuts that needed to be made, starting in '27. So for an 8 million, it's going to be a larger number, probably starting sooner. So you'd almost have to start the cuts in '26.
So you cut busing and immediately go on the ballot? Is the practical implications of that strategy?
And I guess I'll ask just for clarity is, so on the, when back on ballot, that's really not a column related to the length of the levy. That's more of a column related to how long will the district remain above 60 days true cash, based on that levy amount? And the assumption is, is the year in which you drop below that is when you either need to make cuts or you have to be back on the ballot. And so these could all be 10-year levies. The, the column stays the same because you, you run out of money.
And you also got to remember, you know, with our board policy, Tom and I were talking about that today. We look ahead and say, what happens if a levy's rejected? And based on policy, we can't, we should be having a plan in front of the board that says, here's what it takes to keep us at 60 days. And, and you're going to have that before another, before another election. So you're going to have to have those reductions in place before you're on the ballot, actually. Think about, because the ballot's not until November, school's starting in August. So if you're going to take full advantage, and if you want to do a mid-year cut, let's say, let's say I need to cut 4 million, let's say $2 million. $2 million is different cutting in August than it is in January because in January, you're cutting 4 million essentially annually. You're only getting half the savings, right? So the timing of that is, is, is important to consider. Also, just think about the stability for just a second. Ms. Menke is exactly right, there's colored bienniums. But we're going to have a new governor, so uncertainty's going to get worse, is my point. And we just found out where we had an established general assembly, established governor, and what we went through, it's probably going to be worse. So the question in your, in my mind is, do you want to have something set and at least stable where we know where we are through that? Or do you want to be completely reactive at that time? I think that's the question the board's going to have to think about. You know, it may not be adequate, 11 million, but at least we know it's there.
So I, I want to go back. Ms. Laramore, do you have, we're still on your time, so.
Sorry about that.
Oh, it's okay. No, that's, that's quite all right. So in looking at the chart, we've got, which five-year forecast presented? Okay, so we've got, you're looking at two options. Chris just brought up another one. So $11 million annually at 7.8 mils is what is being proposed by, by y'all. Or a 9.9 million at 7.07. So that's eight, eight tenths basically less. But we've got the blue over there in the far corner that we'd have to cut 6.71 million, just for .8? It seems like, it seems like an awful lot to have to cut for just .8 of a mil difference.
Generates $1.4 million. So .8's going to, going to get you, you know, 1.1 million.
That's the chart that's up right now.
Well, this chart shows that, you know, essentially 10 million levy, but that we're trying to maintain expenditure growth to 4%.
Including those cuts.
Yeah, so that's cuts every year. So think about it, it's, think about it as a million dollars in cuts every year, or thereabout. So eight to 12 positions every year.
If you do the 9.9 million. And if you go down even further to the 8 million at 5.75 mils, then you're saying we only have enough money to function for three years.
Less than with cuts.
Well, I'm reading that, that after three years, we have to either pass something else or we have to do cuts. From the way it's written.
So right now, you are leaning towards a smaller levy with cuts? Is that what I hear you saying?
That's what I think I'm hearing from the community. The thing that just baffles me is, is what I've said all along. We've done what they've asked and they've said no each time.
So I do want to clarify because you stated that we had three operating levies previously and we have not. We have had two bond issues for facilities and only one operating. That was the 13 and a half million that had an incremental of the 2 million that we've heard people say that was too much money. We made the cuts. But the other two that did, were rejected were bond issues, not operating levies.
You're right.
So we've heard, we've had, we've heard no once for an operating levy. It was at 13 and a half million this year. You know, next year would have been 15 and a half million. So at 11 million, that was, I think, all of our goals was to be asking for less than we had before, which the 6 million in reductions allowed us to do. So I just wanted to clarify that. Do you have other comments or questions right now? Okay. I just want to, I'm certainly looking at the 11 million. I want to say that what I've heard, I've certainly heard people who want to know, you know, why do we need 11 million? But I hear just as much from, especially parents of students in the district, but those who don't have students in the district, who really value public education and all of the things that we did have to reduce, especially, say, gifted education, that have actually said, I would pay more if it would bring some of those things back. And as of right now, we've said no. So I do think that there's a mixture of voices in the community. And so I think for me, again, I, I want to continue to make sure that we are offering the level of education that, that this community can afford. And I think 11 million offers that right now. I think the five-year for me gets us back on a gubernatorial. It allows the most number of people. I'd love it if everybody voted in off-year elections, but we know that that's often not true. I'd like to have as many people as possible kind of weigh in. And a gubernatorial allows that, an off-year doesn't. To go with four years, we'd be on the local election cycle again, instead of the state level. So that's one of the planes. But I think most importantly for me is we look at kind of some long-range stability, that that five-year gives us time to work on the next strategic plan. It allows us to consider what to do with income tax in the future. Again, the, you know, the flat tax that the state has just approved certainly opens up for higher-income folks, some, you know, tax money that they weren't, that they're, you know, they're not going to be paying anymore in income tax. We can look at that earned income tax and how that would impact versus the traditional. I would like the five-year to get us back in alignment to an even year. Three years isn't enough. It allows us the time to plan around whatever the state does next. You know, I, I can also dream that our next state legislature, when, that maybe the public wants to value education and will elect people that value public education just as much as we do. So I, I can dream and be an optimist. And the rest of you can laugh at me. So I think there certainly is going to need to continue to be, as Ms. Menke and Mr. Bennington pointed out, kind of those avoided costs that I think our district has done an incredible job working on in the last year or two. As well as, you know, continuing to look at, based on our strategic plan, where else we might be able to do some reductions. But the 11 million is the minimum, I think, right now to maintain what we have is, is certainly what I would support. So I think it sounds like, you know, my, my goal would certainly to have us get to some kind of consensus on this. And it sounds like that the, just the amount and the length, you know, are the only two things, are the only two things we have to decide. But I'd like to, I guess, first take a look at the amount because I do think the difference between the minimum we need right now, which is the 11 million versus less than that with cuts is a pretty big difference right now. So I kind of open up this amount to more discussion.
Well, I have a question about something that you said because you mentioned that people would be willing to, to pay for taxes if it would bring back some programs, but nothing that we see in this chart is bringing back any of the programs that were already cut.
They said they would pay, they would spend even more. They'd go back to the 13 and a half. They're, they're the people who voted for the last, you know, not, not everybody voted against the last operating levy. And they're the folks who have said, no, we want to, we want to pay for the education that we want our kids to receive, or we believe the kids in our district deserve. And I think, again, this, you know, what we look at strategically in our, you know, the next couple of years is, do we want to bring that back? And if so, we, you know, we again may need to take a, there may need to be a mid-course correction based on what the state does, but based on what the community says, you know, this is, we value gifted education, we want to bring that back. We keep using that as an example, but there were, you know, 5 million, 5 and a half million other cuts that we also made.
Yeah, I, I don't doubt that there are certainly members of the community that are saying we haven't cut enough. Don't doubt that, and I don't discount that. Equally, I'm hearing folks that are saying a little bit of what you said. I'd be willing to pay a little bit more. I wasn't willing to pay as much as what was proposed in the November 2024 incremental ballot. But I'd pay a little bit more. I'm hearing people say, I don't feel the cuts. Which makes sense to me because most of the cuts are geared for the upcoming school year. And, and for that reason alone, I don't have a real strong desire. I don't have any, I don't have any desire to do any more cuts right now. For the reason of parents, talking to parents about the gifted program. I haven't, you know, I, I've talked to, over the Fourth of July holiday, talked to teachers in my, in my neighborhood that are looking for stability, too. I think that's got to be the sentiment across the district. I think Mr. Christie back there in HR is kind of living that lack of stability right there, as, as all the administrators in buildings are and what will continue to be felt going into the next school year. So it's kind of, for that reason, again, I'm, I'm still at the $11 million, knowing nothing's coming back. And that's what I'm hearing from community members saying. They want programs to come back. They're going to feel the increased athletic fees. They're going to feel the increased art, I'm sorry, performing arts fees. Going to feel that redistricting, you know? And, and that's not why we do this. We do this to try and figure out a way to save as much money as we can. This is not a, let's make the community feel the pain. Just saying, a lot of these cuts that have been done haven't hap, really happened yet in the building when we start a new school year. To sit here and think that of the six, we're kind of talking about doing another $3 million worth of cuts, I, I can't, I can't palette that, I can't go there. And then I'll just skip ahead so I don't have to talk again, too. I'm also aligned with you on the, the term getting it back on a gubernatorial calendar is what's most appealing to me as far as the time, too.
Just go ahead and speak.
Yeah, I guess I don't, I don't have too much to say beyond what I did. I mean, I, I think the, maybe one thing I'll add, right, is that a little bit of the conversation seems to be, oh, well, 11, we don't have to do any cuts and we can just, you know, do what we want to do. I, I don't think that's the case, right? Over the next five years, there are still likely going to have to be very difficult financial decisions made to keep the district where it needs to be from a funding standpoint. financial decisions made to keep the district where it needs to be from a funding standpoint. 11 million is not the spend thrift levy out there. Dropping back to a smaller amount, you know, again, it's, it's a compounding equation, right? If you start dropping a million a year over five years, that's 5 million in cuts. 2 million a year is 10 million in cuts. The numbers just get big really fast as you start, start dropping down. So I think there's a, you know, a little bit of both, right? 11 million keeps us close to where we need to be on a cash standpoint. Gives us time to look at some of the conversions that people are looking at. How do you get to an earned income tax versus the traditional income tax? How do you look at, and then how do you adapt and deal with some of the funding stuff going out there? But I believe there are still going to have to be very strong financial guidance and discipline and, and cuts that are going to have to happen over that five years. Otherwise, 11 million is not going to make it five years. That's, the way inflation is and everything else is, 11 is not going to make it five years. Mathematically, in the spreadsheet today it does, but in the middle of 2027, the spreadsheet's going to be different and we're going to have to look at cuts. We're going to have to look at additional funding. So I don't think 11 is a, we're out of the woods and everything's good type of levy. The other ones just mean we have to start making cuts. To Eric's point before, communities really have a chance to digest the cuts that have already been made because they're not really hitting anything until August, when people start coming back to school.
I, I agree with what you're saying. I am, and I've said it multiple times, I am really worried about year five. If we have any growth over, what do we have, 2% or 1% that's worked in there?
Enrollment.
Enrollment.
1%.
1%. So if we have anything over 1%, we're going to have to start making those cuts. Also, you know, it's still in the early stages, but there is talk about pre-K education. And if we get stuck with that, that's an additional cost that we're going to have to take care of. And we all know from past events, the state is excellent at unfunded mandates. I mean, look at what happened with kindergarten and now all-day kindergarten. It took how many years for us to get all-day kindergarten funded? I think we are better erring on the side of only doing this for four years and not having to go back early and ask for money. It just, it looks bad if we run out and we start taking away, when we tell them we'll do 11 mil for five years and we're pretty much saying that we're going to make it. If we don't make it, then we're going to look bad.
I think if we don't make it, it's going to be more because of what has happened at the state funding than our own finances. Again, we end with 44, I think it was 44 cash days, which again is below the 60, but is in the ballpark. We will, you know, we can make it five years on the 11 million. It's a question of what the state does. And I, at this point, I don't want to, I don't want to ask for more money because really if the state in the next, I still, that's fascinating that they have a year and a half to make decisions about this, but if, if any of that property tax money goes away, that, I, I can't, I'm not going to ask for 12 million to make sure that we can overcome whatever the state decides to do next. So I, I mean, that, that's the concern I have. Right now, the 11 million gets us through five years. Ms. Laramo, I think it's back to you about the 11 million because...
I was hoping you wouldn't notice. All right, to me, the, you know, I'm always looking at the compromise. I understand and I hear what y'all are saying. And I understand what people are saying to me. So to me, wasn't it you, Chris, that brought up the 9.9 million that, that asked for those number? Was it you? I, I think that's the compromise. That's the compromise because it, it also goes to 2030, but...
And you're willing to cut another $7 million more than what we just cut from the budget?
I'm not... In fiscal year '27, '28, and '29, is that, that's not 6 million each year, right? That's over those three years, you'd have to cut another 6 million. So basically, a little over 3 million each year. That just doesn't... That doesn't make sense to me. Have we received out of all the committees and community outreaches and everything else, have we gotten any feedback? This has been out since June. All of the things that have been out there, unfortunately, a lot of those happened when I wasn't able to attend any. What kind of feedback were we getting from any of the outreaches that we did? Were they, were they all for the 11 million? Were they, were they angry about it? People are getting escrow checks back right now, so they're sitting with some money in their pocket. And I'm thinking, oh, boy, this isn't really going to help a lot in the explanation either.
We had those, we had the two sessions. We had a morning session. And I would say there was one or two people that were concerned about the amount but understood it. I would say that there was a larger group that was in more of the, where we went back what the reductions were. There was an evening session with about five or six. And that was, I think, more informative with some questions. Again, I, I don't think anyone came to those forums who I heard in the discussions were against the 11 million. That, I mean, everyone, I think all of us were at least at one of those. So correct me if what I just recorded.
Yeah, was that the morning one?
Yeah.
And that was the only one we did? I thought there were other ones.
Well, specifically about the levy, there's, there was then a forum, the 20, whatever that date was. There was a 20-something forum over at the library. I was not present at that though.
And that's the one I wasn't at either. Okay. I just don't feel like the community has really been very vocal on, on everything that you, that the two of you have laid out. And that makes me excessively nervous because they've had plenty of opportunities to let us know what they, what they want, what they expect us to do.
I mean, I think if you go back to all the conversations that we also had following the November rejection of the levy, you know, again, I, I think with the reductions and with, you know, we, we are even with the 11 million, we're using cash reserves to do that. And so we've kind of responded to that question. Well, you know, all this cash that you have, and meanwhile, it's our savings account. We are going to go through some of that even while collecting the 11 million. So I, I feel like that was part of the conversation that we heard. We heard again that the, the incremental that we put on to maintain as things were was perceived by a lot of folks to be too much. Again, we're asking, we're asking for less than that. And I think it's important, again, to point out that we also have the benefit right now of the high school bond issue falling off next year and how that offsets the cost of the 11 million, that the net increase is, what's the percentage on that? About 25 to, you know, 20% lower than what the 11 million would be without that falling off.
Ms. Laramo, this would, this job would be a lot easier, right? If, if that community was incredibly vocal and if we were able to knock on 20,000 doors and, and do a poll and get it right before we got to take an action on August 5th, right? That's the quandary we're in here, is that we don't have that luxury, that ability. And this is where, you know, from my perspective, it's time to base a decision on my underlying principles of what's best for the students, combined with the data that, that I've spent three, four months looking at and discussing with the administration and you fellow board members, and weighing that against, yes, my more A, that my favorite levy is going to be the one that passes as well. This is just kind of the time where we make that decision that is best for these students, best for this district. And then it'll be beholden on us and other community members to go out there and talk about why this is the right path. Time to go out and win the argument and, and bring, you know, the middle over to what the need is, why the need is, and why we took the decision that we're going to, we're going to ultimately take here.
For me, the, our calling is to represent the public, but to represent the public in support of public education. And this, the 11 million is what provides to this community the education that I've heard, that we are expecting. And to be able to maintain that is, is what I've heard from the public as I represent them. At this time, I think I'm going to request, if someone is ready to do so, a motion for a resolution of necessity, and then we can debate the specifics in that motion. And so I think the motion would need to include the amount and the length because I believe they're the two things we need to fill in. I'm looking at you, Randy. That we fill into the resolution of necessity would be the amount and the length.
Well, I have a resolution of necessity in this agenda. Is this...
It's 11 and 5.
11 and 5, so...
Obviously, it can be edited, edited, edited.
Sure. But I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to motion for a resolution of necessity that I guess I'll say is in the spirit of what I'm looking at here in 7.1, but with the key features being 11 million dollar, five-year emergency levy.
Okay, I have a motion. Mr. Bennington, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson, all right. Open for discussion, emergency levy, 11 million, five-year.
Why is it being listed as an emergency levy and just not a levy? What's the difference?
That's the legal language.
It's an emergency because we need more than the 10 mil floor or the 10 mils.
That's one of the things that the legislature wants to get rid of is that language. But for right now, by statute, it has to be called an emergency levy.
I hate that language, by the way.
I know.
That's one thing that the state could get rid of and we'd be fine.
Because it makes it sound like it's...
There is agreement across, I think, all the associations that that language stinks, but that's the statute.
It just means a levy.
And as I was saying the words emergency, you know, I was getting a bile taste. Did you feel it?
So it's a, yeah, it's a fixed, fixed sum levy.
Yeah, better words.
But we have to use that word emergency. Any discussion?
I'd like, I'd like to call to the question then.
Okay. Not debatable, so we have a call for the question. So it's Mike Roberts' Rules of Orders, that's not debatable, and we have to move to the question or not?
Depends how flexible you want to be.
We were talking about the, the years, the amount of years and the amount of the amount.
We can, I've made a motion for five years.
You can debate the motion. You can debate the motion at this point, right? Or you can, you need to debate the motion, and if you want to try to amend it, you, you can, but there's a motion and a second on the floor for a resolution of necessity for 11 million dollar levy for a five-year term.
Okay, so kind of cutting to the chase. Okay.
We would have to vote on that. I have a motion to, to end debate and to move to a vote. I would need a second and we would have to consider that before we would consider the motion of the resolution. So I need a second if we were to close debate, to vote on closing debate. Without a second, that fails. Let's go back to debate, debating the motion.
So which, are we debating both things or are we debating one thing?
All of the above. It's in a motion right now that we would do a fixed sum, 11 million, five-year levy.
Oh, okay. I'm solid on the five years. I'm not solid on the amount. I'm still very wobbly about that.
Would you like to make an amendment to the motion?
I suppose I could do that. I'll split the difference. I'd like to amend the motion from 11 to 9.9 at 7.07 mils.
I would need a second for us to consider that amendment. Without a second, that amendment would fail. We're back to the original motion. Other discussion or amendments?
I'm going to move that we discuss the years on it.
You would have to make motion of an amendment.
I'll make a motion of amendment to discuss the years on it.
You'd have to do a specific number.
Do what specific for? To discuss four versus five.
So we have a motion to amend the original motion from five years to four years. Is there a second? Hearing none, the amendment is not brought up and we're back to the original motion. Any other discussion or amendments? Then I'd like to move to a vote. Mr. Drewer, roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Menke?
Yes.
Ms. Laramo?
No.
Ms. Roland Miller?
Yes.
Simple majority is needed, so the motion passes. All right. Thank you for a good discussion. Thank you, Mr. Drewer and Mr. Haasler, for the information provided. At this time, we have an agenda item, number eight for executive session. I would be looking for a motion to approve entering into executive session for the purpose of appointment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official.
So moved?
Mr. Bennington, second? Anyone?
Second.
Mr. Anderson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Menke?
Yes.
Ms. Laramo?
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller?
Yes.
With that, we will be moving into executive session. I'd like to invite the board to go up to the conference room upstairs. We do have action based on the outcome of the executive session following the executive session that's possible. So we will be back here for that motion and then to adjourn the meeting following the executive session. the executive session.[536.87]
All right, we're back in session and we have item nine, recommendation looking for a motion to approve the separation agreement with Kelly Wells as presented.
So move?
Second.
Ms. Menke, Mr. Bennington, Mr. Drew, roll call please.
Ms. Menke.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Ms. Larimer.
Abstain.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Roland Miller.
Yes. Seeing no other business, it's a special meeting so we can't have any other business. I call this meeting adjourned with no objections. I guess I should ask objections. No, meeting adjourned.